Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'll ask Bruce Higginbotham to lead us in our invocation and after our prayer, we'll go right into the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you so much for this wonderful day you've given us. So, thank you for this day in history that we could up in the sky today. I pray, Lord, as we do the business of the city tonight, that you've guided us and lead us to do what's right for the city of Northport and its citizens. Lord, ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every day and justice for all.
Mr. Higginbotham, call roll, please.
Councilman Boozer?
Here.
President Logan?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Hogg?
Here.
Give a quorum, Mr. President.
Item five is approval of the agenda. We have one addition, it's item 8A6, it's appeal requisition for an emergency garbage truck repair from Ingram Equipment. Again, this will be on our consent agenda. This is the only item to be added to the current agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Sir, President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item six is visitors to address our council. People First of Tuscaloosa, Mr. Honeycutt, Ms. Parrish, Ms. Lewis, and Mr. Johnson.
To the mayor and city council. My name is Douglas Blake Honeycutt. I am the president of People First Tuscaloosa Chapter. I also work part-time at the Tuscaloosa YMCA. My goal is to be as independent as possible. I have been living in Northport for a few years. Unfortunately, there is no public transportation in the great city of Northport. I have to rely on others to take me to and from work, doctor's appointments, and leisure activities. Tonight, members from Purple First Organization would like to discuss the needs for public transportation. I also would like to provide you with the transportation predicament, predicament, Getting People to Places and Directory of Public Transportation in Alabama 2016. Both books were funded by Alabama Council of Developmental Disability and were created by the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham. In your, in your spare time, please read these studies with the open mind on creating a public transportation system in Northport. Now, we will have Molly Parrish to address you in her personal needs for transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Aaron, and city council members for allowing me to speak the time on a very important, important subject. I am Molly Parrish, and I'm speaking to you on the behalf of People's First of Alabama. I'm asking for your support and direction on getting public transportation to the great city of Northport. This morning, when you went to work, you probably never thought about how you would get to your job site. You already knew that you would take care, take your car keys and walk out the door to drive to work. When you need groceries again, it's just as simple of an act of getting in your car and driving to the store to get the supplies you need. Going to a doctor's appointment, going to the library, going to vote, or going to worship is still a simple task of getting in your car and going to where you want or need to go. However, I and many others like me do not have the luxury of driving our own cars. We depend on others to meet our transportation needs. We are the population of special needs adults, and our voices are strong. We work, we vote, we travel, we spend money in the city of Northport, which turns, means we get a pay of great deal sales tax. But our transportation needs are small when compared to the great benefits that public transportation will bring to the city of Northport. Businesses all across our nation, our country are searching for the perfect city in which to locate. The city of Northport meets many of the needs that would be appealing to new industries. The city of Northport is rich in natural resources. The city of Northport has fair and impartial government and great schools, parks, and recreation. Lower tax and many other resources that would encourage new growth. The city of Northport can boast many things. How disappointing that our fine city is lacking public transportation for its citizens. Public transportation is not a luxury, but it is a real necessity. Having public transportation available to all citizens of Northport will most definitely attract new businesses, manufacturing jobs. New businesses and manufacturing jobs brings families that will buy homes and stop and shop, here and shop here. That means more revenue for this, for our city. Public transportation is a win-win-win situation for all of Northport citizens. It's exciting to think about new growth for Northport and how public transportation could be started with the ball rolling to be a major part of the, of our future of the city of Northport. I'm respectfully asking you to consider and conduct a study on the benefits of public transportation next. I'm asking you to make a plan for public transportation last. I'm asking you to fund and implement a public transportation for our great city. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Mr. President?
Hey, how you doing?
My name is Ryan Johnson, and I live in Northport and would be great city, uh, provide some type transportation to ask assistant me to get into work, go on to dates, uh, with my honey. And transportation would help me get some activities, enjoy assistant, go in the mall, playing the special benefits for football games, and visit friends and public transportation will overall allow me become more independent. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Honeycutt, every, actually, everybody did an excellent job, and I think I can probably speak for everybody on this, this panel and board. We, we actually see the need for a public transportation service. I think it's probably been talked about for a little over twenty years or so. There used to be one. Probably need to look at doing some type of a cost benefit study, like suggested from our citizens. I think it's a needed service, and Mayor, I hope, I know you feel the same way. We just need to figure out a way how we can partner with some existing transportation providers and what may be the cost benefit to it, which we see the benefit, and now we gotta look at the cost to it, so. I wanna thank everybody, and if, James, I'm calling you out just 'cause I work with you every day, so. Wanted you to come up and say something, but you, you guys, I really appreciate everybody who has come to the last few council meetings and, and just put the information on paper so the city and the mayor and council members can see the, the need for a public transportation system, so. Thank you, guys, for identifying it, and what I'll do, we won't stop here. What we'll probably need to do is allow Bruce, our city administrator's office, to look at maybe contacting a transportation provider. I know there's one across the river. There's some federal funds that they use, although there may be some restrictions that we have. But nonetheless, we can at least figure out, you know, routes, costs, things of that nature, so. That way, we can have a somewhat of a report to maybe report back to the group, if that's okay. Is that all right, Mr. Honeycutt? All right. And thank you, guys, for coming. I know you guys have been a regular the last couple of meetings, and I appreciate it. Item 7A1, under unfinished business is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1922 Fourteenth Avenue. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. Our building official examined the structure at this location and determined it to be unsafe and a public nuisance. Notice has been posted for over forty-five days. Regular mail, certified mail, and newspaper advertisement have all been posted. This will be the second reading and ordinance adoption to begin demolition proceedings. We still have to wait a ten-day waiting period prior to any action occurring. I believe this house, it's in a state of disrepair and received some fire damage some time back, and it's just not been aired since then.
All right. By code, I'm, I'm required to open the floor for a public hearing for any citizen wish to comment regarding the demolition for the unsafe structure located at 1922 Fourteenth Avenue. Again, the floor is open for any member of the public who wish to speak for or against this piece of property. All right, hearing done, I, I consider this public hearing closed. Right now is their motion to adopt the ordinance ordering the demolition of the unsafe structure located at 1922 Fourteenth Avenue. That's a motion by Councilman Boozer, is their second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Second item is a second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1313 Twentieth Avenue. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. Our building official examined the structure at this location and determined it to be unsafe and a public nuisance. I believe it had some fire damage in the past as well. We've received some phone call communication early in the process, but nothing since then. We've posted notice, put it in the newspapers, sent regular and certified mail.
All right, thank you. By virtue of code, I'm required to open the floor for any member of the public who wishes to speak for or against this, this agenda item or the demolition of the unsafe structure. Is any member of the public here? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Gina Dancer, and I live at thirty-two twelve Eighth Street in Tuscaloosa. But my family owns thirteen thirteen Twentieth Avenue. I am the granddaughter of the person who stayed there and with my uncle, because this is air property. I was not notified about the demolition until a neighbor called me and told me. Um, y'all had my name on the mail, but it came to thirteen thirteen Twentieth Avenue instead of thirty-two twelve Eighth Street. So, I am pleading to the council, President, and Mayor to give me enough time to sell the property before y'all demolish it.
All right, Ms. Dancer, how much time would you, would you need? And before we, we make that one, Ron, just to make sure, if Ms. Dancer needed X amount of time, we would, we would actually, I don't know if you wanna go through with the demolition with the understanding, or we'll just, we just probably wanna give you some time. Do you have in your mind what, what you're thinking as far as timeframe, if you're trying to sell it?
At least sixty days.
Sixty days?
I have some folks that's interested in it.
Okay.
So, but unfortunately, I can't get a hold of my uncle because this is air property. But I have people that are interested, so as soon as I get with him, it should be sixty days, and we can sell it, and they can do whatever they want to.
All right, just, again, just because it's on the record, if you do sell it,
Mm-hmm.
if it hadn't been up to code, I'm going to see him again. I guess you're a new buyer, so it may be buyer beware, so.
Okay.
Ron, I, I'll chime in if, you know, you chime in if you see something different.
Yes, sir. If you want to go ahead and approve the demolition, but to wait sixty days before the city proceeds, you can certainly do that if that's the will of the council.
Thank you.
Ms. Dancer, let's do this. Let's, let's do ninety days.
Okay.
Give you enough time to, to properly get it out there on the market and sell it.
Okay.
Um, I do wanna put, Ron, maybe a caveat. You know, after ninety days, if you hadn't sold, you know, if it hadn't been sold, it needs to come, it's gonna come back to council to be demoed.
Okay, and I will be here.
If, if it's not, so we'll, we'll, we'll give you ninety days. That way, you can do what you need to do and try to get, get the property sold, and surely the new buyer will, will know that, that, that's probably still on the condemnation list, so they need to make haste in trying to get this up to code.
Okay.
So, um, Ron, what I'll do is, we will, I don't, I don't know if I wanna move to adopt the ordinance ordering the demolition, but I may just say we, we'll give the applicant, Ms. Gina Dancer, ninety days to sell the property. Uh, and then, then such after ninety days, we'll, we'll revisit.
All right, sure. So, basically, it'll be placed back on the agenda, uh, in ninety days, if that's the council.
Let me ask you this, Ron. I know we've done this in the past before. In the past, have we voted to grant the extension and then at the end of that moved forward with demolition?
Yes, sir.
Or did we allow the opportunity to come back before us?
Yes, sir. That's what's happened in the past, but you could do it either way.
Either way.
You can have it come back in ninety days. You can go ahead and vote for the demolition, but to wait ninety days, and then if, if the applicant comes back with some additional information, council could consider it that time, and then make whatever decision you wish. You could, you could handle it, you could handle it either way.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Ms. Dancer, for the record, what is, what is your current address? Meaning?
Thirty-two twelve Eighth Street, Tuscaloosa, three five four zero one.
Make sure the staff has that.
One more question. Ron, do we have, at what step do we come back? Do we come, but we don't have to do first, second reading again, do?
No, sir. No, sir. It would, it would come back, it would come back as a second reading if, if you decide just to postpone it this for ninety days. So, we bring it back as a second reading at that point. That's the way the council wants to proceed.
Thank you, Ron. Again, couple, couple options. Uh, we could postpone it, so again, I'm open to, uh, mayor and council. Again, I know we need to give her ninety days. I think that's, that's what we talking about. We just now need to figure out the process with the, uh, either postponing it or voting it in for demo, so.
I don't know how to put it in the ordinance, but I, I would be fine with granting the ninety days with the notion that you know when you come back in ninety days that
Understand.
you got for a vote at that time. Hopefully, that'll give you plenty of time to, to get it resolved before then.
Okay.
That'd be the second meeting in no
Yeah, that would hit.
Yeah. Whatever, is it ninety days from?
It would be ninety days from today.
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, council, I didn't, I don't, I'll open it for a motion if we move to adopt the ordinance ordering a demo, or if council wants to postpone it. I, I will, I will open it for just to postpone the demolition and grant the applicant, Ms. Gina Dancer, at thirty-two twelve Eighth Street, Tuscaloosa, ninety days to allow the property to be sold. Uh, and if property, you know, is not sold within ninety days, of course, this will go back on the agenda as a second reading ordering the demolition of the structure.
Understand.
At thirteen thirteen Twentieth. So, uh, staff has got, make sure we get your, uh, some contact information from you.
Okay.
So, Ron, I don't know if you want that in an audit, or if that, if that suffices for one.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion to move to grant Ms. Gina Dancer ninety days from today, uh, to allow her to sell the property. And then at such time, if property has not been sold or improvements have not been made, you're required to come back within those ni, you know, those ninety days from today uh, to address the second reading of this ordinance ordering the demolition. Does that suffice, Ron? All right, that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Good luck, Ms. Dancer, selling that, that house, so make
Thank you.
Make sure you get, get that contact to, uh, Mr. Stevens after, you know, after we do this. Third reading? Excuse me, third item, second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at two-one-zero-two Tenth Street. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. Our building official visited this structure and determined it to be in a state of disrepair and a public nuisance. Uh, on Tenth Street, it's been posted and mailed sent out. On this particular one, a, an application was applied for and received last week for demolition, for the, for the owner to demolish it. So, that process is at least begun, but I don't believe they've actually torn it down yet. It just came in last Wednesday.
All right, so they submitted a demo permit for private demolition, right?
Yes, sir, for them to do it themselves, which, which we certainly prefer.
All right, we can defer to them if they get it going, but we'll go ahead and vote on this one tonight.
Yes, sir. I'd recommend that.
Yes. All right, is there a motion to, oh, excuse me. By virtue of the code, I need to open the floor for a public hearing to address the agenda item at two-one-zero-two Tenth Street. Second reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of the unsafe structure. The floor is open for any member of the public. Art, seeing no member of the public wishing to speak, I hereby close the floor. Uh, moving to the form of a motions, there are motion to adopt the ordinance ordering the demolition of the unsafe structure located at two-one-zero-two Tenth Street.
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. New business, eight B one, is a resolution authorizing a special permit for the 2017 Kentuck Arts Festival. Mr. Davis?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. As you'll recall, last year, the city council modified the city code to allow alcoholic beverages to be sold in a city park, but only if the city council allowed a special permit for the consumption, sale and consumption of alcohol for a specific event. Um, and, uh, that was, well, code section was passed last year, and then, uh, the council last year granted a, uh, special permit for Kentuck, uh, again, for that one-year, uh, event, and they have come back again this year and applied. Uh, Ms. Echols, I think, is here, uh, if you have any questions. Basically, the court, the, uh, requested, uh, time would be from ten AM to four-thirty PM on Saturday, October twenty-first, and from noon until four-thirty PM, uh, the following day, Sunday, October twenty-second. Again, all ABC regulations and state laws would, would, uh, apply just as they did last year.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing a special permit to the Kentuck Association to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcohol in Kentuck Park on October twenty-first and twenty-second, 2017, for the Kentuck Arts Festival?
Mr. President, I should have mentioned, this is limited only to sale of craft beer.
Thank you. Let, let the record show that this is limited to craft beer only, and of course, uh, they will be subject to ABC and as you stated. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item C is our consent agenda. We have six items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training for various employees, appeal requisition for our, our audit expenses, uh, and of course, appeal requisition for the emergency garbage truck repair, eight thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents out of Public Works. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Boozer. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. If any member of council wanted to speak on their committee, floor is open. Hearing done. Item ten, public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, sir. Um, I would like to address the upcoming September meeting schedule. Uh, the first meeting in September, uh, is in, is, falls on the Labor Day holiday, so, um, we need to decide, uh, how the September meeting schedule looks. Um, it has been brought up that we possibly move the meeting to the eleventh, which, and leave the remaining, think of meeting on the eighteenth, so it would, uh, make the two meetings, September the eleventh and the eighteenth, if that is what you desire to do.
Thank you, Bruce. We talked about it in our pre-meeting, and if there's a motion, uh, the floor is open to adjusting the council meetings to, as suggested, September the eleventh and September the eighteenth. Pre-meeting at five PM and formal meeting at six PM, both, both dates. Uh, that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Sir, President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item twelve, departmental business out of our legal department. We have a couple claims. Claim number one-seven-dash-three-one, uh, Ron.
Uh, yes, sir. Before we do that, I'd like to do a brief commercial, and thank you. As you know, this council has let us rework the code. Uh, we've gotten our first supplement in, and, um, it is now, the code will be added to, to, the supplement will be added to the paper books, but most of you, if you want to look at the city code, you go online to Munich Code, and now we're current through July first of this year. So, we're about a month and a half behind. Uh, we intend to, uh, supplement every six months. Costs money to do that. We will make, we can look to doing it more often, but, uh, right now, we think every six months will be sufficient to try that. But, um, but I thank Ms. Brock for all her hard work in doing that. So, now we're current through July first of this year rather than 2012. So, I thank the mayor and council for that. As to the two claims, uh, the first one is in the amount of just nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents due to damage to vehicle, due to pothole. Uh, this is substantially less than what was requested. The claimant has agreed to accept this payment. It's the recommendation of Claims Committee that this be paid, um, on that claim. It's seventeen dash thirty-one.
Thank you, Ron. Is there Thank you, Ron. Is there a motion to approve or deny the claim seventeen dash thirty-one in the amount of nine sixty-eight point seven-one?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Sir, Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a claim number one-seven dash four-six. Ron.
Uh, yes, sir. This is a claim filed by Essex Square Apartment. The city has a water main up the hill from Essex Square. It, we had a water leak, and, um, they, it flooded, uh, I believe, three or four apartments, one pretty badly. So we're very fortunate the claim is not more than this. Uh, I don't think the tenant wanted an aquarium in their apartment, but they got one for a little while. So, we would ask that this be paid in the amount of one thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and eight cents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve or deny the claim one-seven dash four-six in the amount of one thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and eight cents?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item thirteen is public comment. We have one citizen sign to speak. I know Ms., Ms. Dancer has already, uh, had her, uh, concern met. Uh, Mr. Woodrow Washington. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Woodrow Washington. I'm thirty-seven twenty-five Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Norfolk. Uh, I'm here today just to speak on, uh, a couple of things. Uh, one concern is the, uh, Norfolk Hasen Center. You know, I, I spoke to a bunch of you guys about it, uh. I also want people to know, you know, my intent is like, uh, I plan to organize a nonprofit, Academics Emotions. And, uh, I got, I have a lot of people coming back to me, asking me what's going on, and I really can't tell them anything. And, uh, like I told them, I, I, I will address it, and, you know, whatever the council decides is cool. I'm, I'm, I'm really hoping you guys really think about it, and, and I know a lot of you have. So, I appreciate the effort so far. Uh, but I really wanna try to figure this out for everybody. School year coming up, and Academics Emotion is one of the things we wanted to provide was tutoring for after school. And, uh, there's a lot of kids who really can't afford tutoring, and, and, and to me, we're willing to fund it, you know, volunteer students and everything, just to give kids opportunity to have somewhere to go, to get that extra education that they need. And also providing computers, internet, places they can print their homework from, you know, besides going to the library across town. But, uh, my organization, it, it's, it would be funded by people in the neighborhood, and, and people volunteering, business. Archibalds and Woodrows would be a large sponsor of it, because that's me. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm mainly just want to address it because we really need to do something with the Hasen Center. Uh, the other part of the Academics Emotion, the motion part is providing camps and athletic programs like baseball, this, this is a field there. And providing camps, football, baseball, basketball camps for underprivileged kids who really can't afford to go to these different camps out of, out of town and everything. You know, you have to have that extra edge, you know, to get to the next level. And to me, the next level is not going to the pros. The chance you go into pros is slim. But the next level is getting an opportunity to go to college, and possibly get a scholarship somewhere, junior college, you know, a D-one, D-two. But every kid needs to get the opportunity, at least have a, a running chance at it. And for us, the, the motion part of it is giving them that extra training that other kids get, who can afford it, and who's invited. But, this would be open up to anybody across the city, Tuscaloosa, across the county. It's not just gonna be Norfolk kids, it's anybody who wanna come. Uh, some of the things that we've done is get, get different guys, college, ones who, who's been in college and played. I have a lot of folks ready to, to do a lot of work. Uh, I spent a little time down there, you know, we all done talked about it, and I'm not putting any pressure on you guys, at all. I promise you. You know, I, I, last thing I need is another job, so. But I, I, I really wanna see this, you know, when I ran, I ran about helping, and, and, and when people come to me, ask me, and when I say I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna try to do it. Uh, people came to me, asking me questions about it, and I can't give them answers. I'm hoping that the council will really, really look at it, put it out front. You know, if we can do it, we can do it. If you can't, you can't, and that's, that's understandable. I know it's a tight budget, uh, but it's a lot of kids out there needing this, uh, and it's a lot of people out there ready to work. It's a lot of people ready to work, uh. You know, we've talked about different stuff, and you know, if we can't do it, we can't do it, uh. But, I'm not here to cause any trouble, or, or ruffle any of our feathers, and if I am, I'm sorry. Take it that way. But I, I, I just really want y'all to really consider this, uh, the time is creeping up schools back in, and soon, you know, it'll be getting colder, it'll be time for summer again, and also getting a chance to get these, uh, camps going. So, uh, I mainly just wanna see the Hasens Center. You know, right now, a lot of folks have called, asked about the grass, so that, they saw me cutting the grass, and they were like, why you ain't cutting them? I'm like, I ain't cutting them. You know, it's a lot of grass, and I know it's a lot on the city to cut the grass. Uh, you know, we was down there for two and a half days, and Lord knows, that's, that was tough. But, uh, you know, right now, it just need a little attention to it, and, uh, you know, I'm bringing it up to the, to the light, and you guys, like I said, if you wanna look into it, or, or really try, I know the, the, the people in district two, the, the kids, the families, because I had to help one of my nephews with, uh, tutoring. And Lord knows, I didn't understand that people charged that much. I paid a hundred dollars for four hours of geometry. And if, you guys know, everybody can't afford that, so. I really appreciate it. Uh, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm, I'm here to answer any.
Hey, Woodrow, I know Councilman Boozer just come online. I know you probably, it may be a good idea to get him maybe up to speed. Does that make sense? I know, Councilman, you probably just coming on, and probably may be worth it to sit down and, and go through kinda what, exactly what you wanna do. And I know we, we kinda discussed indirectly just the condition, meaning the grass and some other issues. Uh, it is a city property, you can't get that around it. So, you know, that's something that we as a city gotta look at doing. That's just my personal opinion, in terms of grass cutting. I mean, I don't know what else to say, other than if it's a city property. You know, I'm saying that. I mean, I'm, when I make this statement, I say this. If I send a letter to a property owner whose grass is not cut, I have to also cut my own grass, if that makes sense. But, uh, I know you and I had this conversation indirectly. There were some other things too, I think staff brought to us, some renovation costs and some other stuff that we trying to figure out. If you, who does what, if, if you lease it, if you do a long-term lease, who's on the hook for what, who does what, who's bootstrapping, who's filling in the gap? These are the things. Now, I think, uh, with Councilman Boozer coming on, and trying to figure out a, a good way of trying to make it work, Woodrow. That, that's really my, what I'm seeing now. Not saying nobody, I li-, I like the idea. Now, I'm gonna put that on, I like the idea. I like the program that you're talking about offering. I think the question is with your group, who does what from a financial standpoint, who's, who's responsible for what? I think that's something where council needs to sit down and say, okay, we're willing to do X, we're not willing to do X. So I don't know if that's been addressed with Councilman Boozer coming online yet too, so we need to address it quickly, good, bad, or indifferent. So I, I agree. I, I think indirectly, this is just me looking on outside. I mean, if it's a city-owned property, technically, you don't have to cut the grass, if that makes sense. But, you did, and I appreciate that.
So what it was, is just like, you know, and, and I opened it up and, and just said, you know, whatever the city decide, you know, if they give us opportunity to do this, and, uh, if the city say we'll do this, we'll do that, or if the city say, well, we can't really do it because we're really strapped right now, I'm okay with any option. I mean, if we need to pay all the bills, we'll pay all the bills. You know, if we need to cut the grass, we'll cut the grass. We just need to know. I mean, I can get volunteers to cut the grass, believe it or not. Uh, it's a lot of folks out here who really would.
Well, see, that's what happened in a previous life, and I, Brooke, I ain't putting you on the spot, but in a previous life, I don't know if we ever cut the grass like that on a regular basis. That used to hap-, you know, I'm not putting nobody on the spot, but as far as volunteer, that bootstrapping part of it.
Well, I don't have a problem with you anyway, y'all decide. Like I said, if, if we need to take care of everything, it's just knowing. And, and, you know, if the city feel like, well, we need to give them a little help, we will appreciate it, if the opportunity comes, you know. And if not, we understand it also. I just need to tell people stuff, and just to kinda get it off my plate. But it's something we really wanna do. I, I believe it'll be a real benefit for the, the, uh, people in district two, and also the city of Norfolk, because we're not gonna turn kids around out of district one, out of district four, who need, who, who need tutoring. You know what I'm saying? So, and we also had it set up for like, doing some, some, uh, uh, some elder programs during the day. I know we spoke of that, Jay, and, uh, that was one of the things. You was like, well, can y'all do this? I mean, we gonna make it happen.
Well, that was one of my biggest concerns. I, I feel like if, if you gotta take care of your, your children and your, and your active adults. I don't even call them seniors, 'cause they're active adults.
That's the new word.
That's the new word, active adults. Yes, ma'am, active adults. Active adults. You don't call them seniors anymore, they're active adults, so.
And, and, uh, once again, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to hit nobody and nothing. Me and Rodney, we didn't talk, text, about all this. Everybody trying to work their way, but I just have to get it out here, 'cause people start calling me. It's getting old. Now, I'm like, man, I don't know, you know.
And I'll say for the record, the same thing, I told you, and, and who I've talked to, you know, as far as your program itself, no issue. I think it's wonderful, it's a great idea. But I want you to own the building. I wanna sell it. That, that's my opinion. We haven't really discussed that any further. That's just my opinion about that. I think it needs to be in the hands of somebody like yourself, or somebody that can take care of it, and not have to depend on the city to come do this, or do that. I see it working better that way. That's just me.
Do you not like, do you not like that option?
I mean, that's even better. So, I mean, we'll make it work. I mean, like I said, I, I've been coaching forever, and, uh, I'm not coaching anymore. I know nothing about baseball, but, I mean, we have a program, just wait, you know. But, uh, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for the kids to get a lot. And you know, we gonna do everything we can with the funds that we have, and we gonna solicit and borrow, and, you know, ask people, you know, people gonna give it to the kids. That, that's what's so crazy. If it ain't nothing but time, all these churches, we'll make them do something, you know. So, hey, I appreciate it. Uh, if y'all don't have any more questions, uh, if anybody need to talk to me, ask me any questions afterwards, you're welcome to. If you wanna donate some money, it's even better, you know, so. But I appreciate it.
Well, look, Woodrow, um, Councilman Boozer is coming online, and he, he does need to be brought up to speed, I guess, from your perspective. So it may be worth a conversation, you know, both of you men getting together and doing it from that standpoint. Councilman Sullivan brings up an option. Uh, and again, we're going into executive session to discuss sale of property. I'm not saying this is one of the issues, but that may be an option. I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but that may be an option. But again, I can't, I can't speak for everybody, but you got a real good program. It's just like Rodney said, we're trying to figure out the, the, the back, the back part of it. Who does what? Who pays for what? Who, who's, who's gonna do this and not do this?
Now, it is okay to be a little generous too now, so don't, don't just pull all the funds out. And, uh, me and Councilman Boozer supposed to talk about a little road work anyway, so just whenever you get a chance, uh, it, most, most everybody have my number, so you're welcome to call me anytime. I'm retired, so I can kinda do what I like.
Yeah, let, let's talk after the meeting. Uh, we talked about the road, and let's, let's talk about the settlement, so we can get together, and I'll take up everybody else's time.
Yes, sir.
But, the, the thing that I see, and I've, I earned this senior status, and I'm kinda proud of it. Uh, but through that, being twen-, a principal for twenty-seven years, and then coached for fourteen before that, the same thing always happens, maintaining ownership, and, you know, not somebody burning out, you know, you know. It's a situation that you got to have somebody that is, has, it, you know, they sold out, they're all in, you know, they're, they're part, and, you know, we're gonna do whatever it takes to, to get it done. And, uh, what I've heard, I like what you're planning on doing, and, and, and like, get up on it a little bit better, so.
Okay.
Let's set a time.
I do it. Appreciate it. Y'all have a good evening.
I think we need to also kinda give Mr. Washington a timeframe when we will have something back for him. Maybe, uh, I'm for that. I've been for that from.
Uh, it sounds simple, but it's pretty complicated. I mean, he needs twenty thousand dollars for work right now today.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three thousand.
And that'll probably go up more. That's just on the AC unit and electrical work that I, I saw, but, I mean, he'd have to go through, uh, we have a process, we'd have to surplus it, and I, I don't know how long that'll take, but.
Yeah, you, you have.
We may not all agree to do that, but, I mean, I agree with your program, what you wanna do, so.
We are a nonprofit, so it's, it'll work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. I'll start with District One, Councilman Boozer.
Nothing denied.
Uh, under my business, I wanted to, uh, thank again, Mr. Honeycutt, Ms. Parrish, uh, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Johnson for coming. They did a great job in proposing and, and charging the city. We're looking at doing, uh, some public transportation and looking at the cost associated with it. Um, and just, we really, I really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you a lot. We, we'll, we'll get you some information. Uh, Bruce's office will look into, uh, starting one from scratch, partnering with somebody, and he'll get at the council too, and, you know, we'll, we'll at least have the information. Uh, also too, uh, Bruce, I, I'll steal your thunder a little bit. The, uh, MLK PE contracts have been signed, is it today?
Got word today, yes, sir.
Got word today. So what that means is, this project is a hundred percent go, from the ALDOT standpoint and from the federal standpoint. Uh, so Russ, and I see him in the back, his, his team over at BKI will begin some of the, uh, initial design work from the X's and O's standpoint. And then you may see some surveying out on MLK at some point. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll try to field the causes as they come in, but again, this is a big step, and I, I wanna thank this mayor and council uh, for being very, very progressive. So, that's all I have under my business. Uh, District Three, Councilman Sullivan. District Four, Councilman Davis?
I have none, Mr. President.
District Five, Councilman Hogg?
Oh, under the, uh, Health Development Committee, there's not much we can say until.
Oh, go, don't let on, don't let on.
Things are done, but.
Don't let on. Mum's the word.
We will, uh, address some of that in, in executive session, and hopefully citizens some more information regarding our retail efforts and our, um, contract with our retail consultant over the last nine months. So, we'll report on that at some point soon.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Aaron?
I don't have anything tonight either. Thank you.
Item fifteen, we do have an executive session, so Ron, if you would, uh, kinda give us the, uh, mechanics behind that.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, uh, I've been asked to go in executive session to discuss retail development, uh, the sale, potential sale of city property, and also, I would like to discuss some potential litigation. The estimate I was given was an hour. Usually you can double that, hopefully not, but, uh, I think the apartment heads, the council's right with them to go home, except unless they're needed, and I think, well, I want to see Brooke afterwards, but other than that, uh, we'll come back. There will be no action taken tonight, other than coming back out and adjourning, hopefully in about an hour and fifteen minutes. That's my best guess at this time.
Alright, thank you, Ron. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting into executive session to discuss sale of city property, retail development, and potential litigation involving the city. The session should take no longer than one hour and a half. One hour and a half. Uh, it's anticipated the council will not take any action after the session is concluded. Again, that's in the form of a motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg? Questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Are we in executive session, so if you need to do some housekeeping stuff, you got one minute.